All good. Okay, we'll call for a vote, those in favor.
Aye.
Also vote aye. We'll run down consent agenda items, but we'd had one we wanted to add and that would take a a motion if somebody wanted to give that to add that.
That IP consultant contract.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we add to the consent agenda an IT consulting agreement. As you know, our IT director has resigned and our discussions have convinced us that it would be a good idea to reach out to somebody who's not connected with the county to have them do an analysis of the operations of that department and make recommendations and commendations if they're warranted and before we fill that that post. So I'd like to have us add that to our consent agenda.
Okay. Here in Savannah, you have your hand up?
Good morning, Commissioners. I have Ashley on the line with purchasing. So this agreement, I don't believe, went through the purchasing process to go out for a formal RFQ or RFP for the amount of money that it is. I believe we would have to do that process according to the PA's office. And I believe Ashley's trying to jump on as a panelist. I just raised my hand because I happen to be on the phone with her, so.
We're checking, I thought. Conversation here is we've had an email from Doug, so I don't, I don't know. Mr. Chairman, that's a current email?
Mm-hmm.
Just now? Just this minute? No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Let me try to get that.
Yeah. We're trying to get legal online, make sure we're doing the right things, but the contract is basically it's 200 bucks an hour. It runs for 90 days not to exceed 28,000, so that's the dollar figures we're talking about here.
Yeah, I tend to look at this as certainly when you're doing things like procuring material, you better get a bid. If you, if you're trying to get expertise and you happen to know what it is you're looking for and you found it, just do it.
Agreed.
And she's having some technical difficulties trying to jump on, so I, I just let her know that I relayed the, the information and what's next is up to you guys.
Yeah, so the other Commissioners can hear it.
Okay. This is from Doug Jensen dated on April 10th. Personal services agreement fall under our procurement policy attached in the B O C C. May need to articulate this agreement as an exception to the policy. As PSAs envision the use of competitive solicitation or RFPs per policy, the RCWs for competitive bidding exclude PSAs, so standard and services agreements are locally based only. And I would loop in Ashley for additional discussions with you as needed, and she did not respond.
So he's basically saying these PSAs are excluded from that because I think kind of along the lines what you were talking about.
Yeah. In addition, there, it's not like we have a lot of time to make any investigation over any number of applicants simply because our IT director will be gone May 3rd or May 4th and we're hoping to have a little bit of overlap.
But I think what I'll do.
Go ahead and do it.
Oh, yeah, I'll call for the vote to add that to the agenda.
Bailey's right here.
So if you want to amend your motion to waive the, yeah.
Yes, because of the press of time, I'd like to add to that motion that we, we waive the the current procurement policy for this time only.
Okay. So we got a motion on the floor, comments?
Would you repeat the motion in its entirety?
Oh. I made a motion to approve the IT consulting personal services agreement as proposed by staff and also waiving the application to county procurement policy.
Okay. It's one we're adding, Steve. So that's, that's why I took a motion to, to do it. Okay?
So again, I think you mentioned it, there, the cost, we're hiring a consultant that we're familiar with. $200 an hour is, is the, the charge, but not to exceed $28,000 and a 90 day contract, so if he uses that much time to do an analysis of the, the department, it's, it's, it's limited, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, any other hands you see that I don't see? All good? Okay, we'll call for vote to add this to the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Also vote aye. Okay, I'll run through the consent agenda. We have a call for hearing to amend the six-year transportation improvement plan on scheduled for May 14th at 9:30. Basically, they'll be adding two Colbert projects to the plan. Agreements, contract bid awards. Water quality, storm water capacity agreement with the Washington State Department of Ecology to provide stormwater funds with 130,000 to continue implementation of the National Pollutant Discharge Illumination System. Interlocal agreement with City Council to provide administrative or engineering services not to exceed 320,000 per calendar year. There, we do that a lot, a lot of interlocals with the different cities. Interagency agreement with Washington State Department of Enterprise provide energy utility conversion project management services. This is a fee-based, if we use them to help us look at how we can save some energy or we pay a fee, if it results in a contract with somebody, then that comes back to us. Interagency agreement with the Calhats County Noxious Weed Control Board and the Washington State Department of Agriculture. They're providing a $3,000 grant to project a survey and control Class A noxious weeds including faults, broom, egg, leaf, spurge and giant hogweed. And an interlocal agreement between Washington State University through the Washington State University Extension in Calhats County to continue its coordination and cooperation with the WSU Extension. This is for, it runs from January 2024 through December 2025, basically two years for 108,088. And then we just added this personal service agreement with Travis Foschini. 90-day agreement to run 17th day of April through the 17th day of July. Uh, not to exceed 320,000 per calendar year. There, we do that a lot, a lot of interlocals with the different cities. Interagency agreement with Washington State Department of Enterprise provide energy utility conversion project management services. This is a fee based. If we use them to help us, uh, look at how we can save some energy or um, we pay a fee if it results in a contract with somebody, then that comes back to us. Uh, interagency agreement with the Calitz County Noxious Weed Control Board and the Washington State Department of Agriculture. Uh, they're providing a $3,000 grant to project a survey and control Class A noxious weeds, including faults, brom, egg, leaf, spurge and giant hogweed. And an interlocal agreement between Washington State University uh, through the Washington State University Extension in Calitz County to continue its coordination and cooperation with the WSU Extension. Uh, this is for, it runs from January 2024 through December 2025, basically two years for 108,088. And then we just added this personal service agreement with Travis Foschini. A 90-day agreement to run 17th day of April through the 17th day of July. Uh, consulting fee of $200 an hour, not to exceed $28,000 over that period of time. Letters, notices. Uh, we reappointed Steve Madison to the homeless housing tax force. Tim Hort, as you just heard, our IT director is resigning effective May 4th, 2024, taking another job. And then a, a letter from the Federal Energy Regulation Regulatory Commission uh, to Pacific Corps. It basically is a letter uh, talking about an easement of .004 acres and it relates to repairs from the 2017 SLIDE event upon 503. Vouchers in the amount of $4,137,866 and 11 cents. Any questions on consent agenda?
Um, the resolution? You skipped over the resolution. Uh, that was, and, and I think Aron had asked to have it pulled.
We put, we put it down to motion items.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, the public hearing for the six-year plan is specifically to allow the public to suggest additions or changes. We have to have a six-year plan under Washington state law. Cities and counties all go through this. But the public hearing is the, is designed to make sure the public has an opportunity to to let us know where there need to be additional improvements made in our, our roads and bridges. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Yeah, motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any questions, comments?
I've got an additional comment, uh, on the interlocal agreement with WSU. Uh, that seems like a bargain. I, it's, uh, if people don't know that WSU Extension is available to you for all kinds of questions and all kinds of programs. Uh, it's there and they're all constructive.
Yeah, I, he was in yesterday and I, I, I mentioned and I, I've had, I sit with Gary for about an hour every month and just go over the different programs and, and they, they, they offer a lot from small business help to gardening to it's just they, to the schools, to suicide prevention. They're just got their hands in a lot of, a lot of different things to help the county. So and the majority of what funds them is actually WS, SU. So I, I would agree. That's pretty, pretty good bargain. Any other questions, comments on consent? Any no? Call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Also vote aye. Okay, we have two motion items today. The first one was, uh, Calitz Medical Service District One. We might just have you kind of like yesterday. I can explain it because I learned something yesterday when they sit down. Uh, Calz District One is made up, it's through, made up through an interlocal agreement. They serve Highway 503 corridor, about 1,000 square miles and they're, they're looking for a resolution to put an item on the ballot and the Commissioners, I learned, kind of serve as their board of directors. So that's why it comes, it comes to us.
Yeah. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today. There was a couple of questions asked for clarification. We spent uh, most of the remainder of the afternoon yesterday trying to drum up a map of EMS District One in Calitz County. And unfortunately, uh, the best version we had was probably a two foot by two and a half foot map that was made in the seventies and drawn on with pen by our, our original founder. And so that's a project for another day that we're trying to track down. But what I can tell you is the bulk of EMS District One in Calitz County is the southeast sliver on the 503 corridor. Essentially the tip of Lake Merwin, approximately, uh, Merwin Village Road on 503 on the west end. And then, uh, the Clark Calitz Boundary, the county boundary there, and then the Skamania County Calitz Boundary on 503 Spur going east up towards St. Helens is the primary area that we serve. We serve approximately 1,000 square miles over three counties. Um, and so the resolution before you today has been adopted by the North Country Board, which is made up of individuals both elected and appointed from those three areas. And, um, essentially it's an excess levy. We're funded by three sources. We bill for transport. When we take somebody to the hospital, we bill them for transport. Private insurance, if there's additional cost after what the, uh, private transport is willing to pay, we write that off. We don't send additional bills to citizens who pay into the North Country EMS service taxing. Um, excuse me, we run a 10-year levy across the three entities that make up North Country EMS, which is Calitz County, Clark County and Town of Yakalt. And then the excess levy, which is the third part of our budget. That's collected in one year and it's, it's expended over three to four years. Sometimes we draw it out to five. It just depends on how much business we do. Transporting folks to the hospital, revenue generated, things of that nature. Um, the other question that was asked is, uh, the amount of residents that we actually serve in Calitz County. Again, I don't have a number for that. We tried to get it yesterday and we're having some trouble getting return phone calls. So I know that we've run approximately a little over 200 calls in 23. And so that number is climbing continually. North Country runs about 1,600 calls per year with approximately 1,100 transports. So.
Great. Okay.
Thank you. The thing I'm not clear on is that this is to go as part of the property tax?
Yes, sir.
And that's for only those people in your district or?
Calitz County, Clark County and Town of Yakalt. Correct.
But only in the EMS one district?
EMS District One, and that's across those three areas. Yes.
Okay. And then the reason it's an excess levy is because 10 years ago, when you did the last, uh, main levy, I guess, uh, you just are not able to plan. And I understand that you're not able to plan over a 10-year time. A lot of things change. So rather than redo a full-blown thing, you do the excess levy. Is that right?
There are limitations to what an EMS district can levy. So a fire district can levy up to a dollar 50 per thousand. We can levy 50 cents per thousand. We'd love to change that rule, but unfortunately, but this is where we're at. So we have to make up the remainder of our budget in excess levy. So we can't tax to our full a- a- actual taxing need just through our EMS, our regular EMS levy.
Okay.
So this is, this has been done this way since the seventies. And so unless the law changes, we'll continue to operate.
Oh, yeah. I, part of my questions are always going to be because I need the education. So does the public is to.
Absolutely.
The entanglements that occur, legislation here causes you to do that there. It's, uh, I'm not sure which is more efficient, but it's certainly like you have no choice now.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's much to our frustration. We, we appreciate transparency also, and we want the public to understand how the EMS system works and how it's funded and how important it is. Um, because 1,000 square miles is not a small area. And like I mentioned yesterday, we're generally, just because we're responding and designated fire districts in some areas, a lot of that area has no fire district response. So we're the only people showing up. So it's, it's very important and transparency is also important to us.
So a portion of your district is also the national forest, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
So national forest doesn't provide any.
They do not. Yeah. So we, North Country has also hosted a rescue team for a long, long time. The volcano rescue team, after the monument was open to recreation. We saw the need to actually respond into, you know, that area to go get folks that are in trouble. And so um, it's an all volunteer team. You'd think we would have some ability to subsidize through like climbing permit fees or things of that nature. We've been unsuccessful in that. And so those folks pay for their own gear. We give them the vehicles and, and, uh, we make it work. So.
Could, could you go through a single sort of compound example of, uh, of an event that you would take care of? So I'm hiking in the forest area. I slip, I break a leg. Someone makes a call to whom and, and after that?
Yeah. So a great example would be the recent, uh, call that got quite a bit of, uh, media attention from the gentleman that fell into the crater. I don't know if you guys saw the publications on that. This happened just a couple of weekends ago. So essentially the sheriff's office in Washington state is responsible for search and rescue. We're just the people that go do it. And so when they call us, they, somebody would call 911, it'd get funneled through the dispatch center. Sheriff's Office is notified. They recognize the need for a search and rescue team. They call the search and rescue team. We respond and, and deal with the situation. Um, in the case, a couple of weekends ago, that was exactly the scenario. We got the phone call. We organized some helicopter response, flew into the crater. The rescue team did also responded on ground. Um, went in and got the subject. Unfortunately, he was deceased. Um, had he been alive, they'd bring him to the parking lot or wherever, uh, the incident commander chose. And then a North Country ambulance would meet that person, transport all the way to the hospital. Uh, oftentimes if we can, we'll put a paramedic in the hospital. So you would get advanced medical support from the time of initial contact all the way to the hospital, which is extremely uncommon. Um, but that's how the North Country system was built and that's how we do it today.
Okay. If, uh, with relief? Yeah, if, uh, there are a couple of questions. I'm not sure which one to ask first. So, uh, just to let people know, this is uh, a resolution to put on the ballot. So the public will get to decide whether they're going to sign up for this or not.
Absolutely.
So, uh, and at that point, I know Carolyn Fundingsland, our auditor, had some interest in explaining some nuances there, but I, I don't see her on. Oops.
There she is.
Morning.
Good morning.
So I did notice that EMS is submitting resolutions for both the primary and the general election and your timelines are really short. So I guess my spiel is for you. You have until May 3rd, uh, is the deadline to submit your resolution cover sheet and appoint your committees and submit your explanatory statement. And then I'm assuming you'll pass on the primary. You passed by, I want to say 73% in 2021. But on the day of the primary, when you see election results, you have seven days to withdraw your ballot resolution. Since you're submitting two to be safe, I just want to make sure you're very aware of the deadline. It's incumbent upon you to contact us in writing, can be a simple email, to withdraw that resolution from the general or it's going on the general as well. So just want to make sure you're aware of the deadline.
Yes, ma'am. We've done that historically just because of the timelines to actually submit and not knowing what's going to happen in the initial election. And so understanding that the emergency services funding is, is imperative to community safety. We're not willing to take a risk just putting it on the initial. Um, if it did happen to fail, of course, we would go to great effort to educate the public and what it meant to not have that ambulance service in that area. And so that's the why historically.
The only other district in the county that, sorry, Aron, that I'm aware that does that is the library. So, uh, you're kind of unique in that way. It's smart. Just want to remind you of the, uh, deadline to withdraw though.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I, I did have one more question, but I, I, I think it's almost answered. So, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Chairman, I moved to approve the, uh, to file the resolutions or filing resolutions from Calitz County Emergency Medical Service District Number One, as has been presented.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the resolution? Any comments, questions on that?
Just an obvious clarification, only those voters living within the district boundaries are going to be affected by that. So the entire public isn't, isn't part of the decision-making.
That's right. Yeah. The interlocal clearly defines the area of Calitz County EMS District One and then Town of Yakalt and Clark County EMS District One. So all three of those entities have the opportunity to vote.
And no vote in Skamania County?
No vote in Skamania County because Skamania County EMS Hospital District collects taxes and we operate by contract in Skamania County. And so it's a, a little different function there.
Out of curiosity, how, how does that, how do you charge for that, that then?
Yeah.
Per event?
Yeah. So if we run a call for a citizen in Skamania County, they get the full bill. So the billing policy is obviously all of our policies are, are adopted by the North Country Board. And part of that billing policy is how we function in Skamania County and those individuals, since they're already paying into the Skamania County Hospital District, the EMS District there. We operate by contract. And then if we transport somebody out of Skamania County, which a large part of the year over the winter, we're the only ones that can access that area. And so it makes sense just to continue the service during the year. Um, we operate the, the rescue team, which does a lot of work in Skamania County. So in order to maintain a seamless EMS system there, that's how it's been done for years. Um, but if we transport a citizen or, or anybody that's a non-resident that doesn't pay into, um, the North Country system via taxes, they receive a, a full transport bill, just like they would from American Medical Response or something of that nature.
So that, uh, they're always interesting things. If I, I live, I'm not in the EMS area. If I'm hiking in the EMS area and I need help, do I get a bill?
Search and rescue has prided itself on not billing specifically for services, although that's sort of changing over the last handful of years. You would see a bill when you get in a North Country ambulance, if you don't live in our service area and pay taxes into the system. So if we take you to the hospital, you would see a bill.
Okay, thank you. Not that thank you is for answering the question, not for the bill.
Yeah, of course. Those paramedics are not cheap.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ron.
So I presume that you said up to 50 cents per 100,000. What is your mileage rate that this 500,000 is going to be based on?
So the 50 cents per thousand is the regular 10-year levy and we don't tax currently at 50 cents per thousand. It's more like 38 cents per thousand. As the years go, it walks down. That would be the regular levy. It's, that's renewed every 10 years. So I believe that's back up for vote in '29. This is an excess levy to make up the remainder of the budget. We can't function on 38 cents per thousand assessed valuation.
So what is the rate that the taxpayers in your district are going to be see on their tax bill?
We won't know the actual rate until the assessor puts out their information at the end of the year. This is extremely convoluted to explain, but I'll, I'll do my best at 10,000.
You can do kind of what is expected a range.
Yeah. So essentially it's put out at a dollar 34 per thousand, but it's more about the amount of money that we're collecting from these particular areas. So for example, if we say we need to collect $500,000 in Calitz County, that's dependent on the assessed valuation at the end of the year. And so whatever your assessed valuation is, that equation is applied to the amount of money that we're looking for in that particular area. And that's how much money you would see due in that next year. So approximately, I, I believe at the current rate that we're asking for, it's, uh, roughly $600 over a three-year period. You pay it in one year. It's an excess level. You pay it in one year. We expend it over three to four years. Depending on our, you know, obviously how our budget works for those out years and it's, it's difficult to foresee that. But if we can stretch it out, we stretch it out.
Okay. So the voters are going to see this to vote on it and each one of them or prudent ones will be asking, how much is this going to cost me? Will they know how much it's going to cost them when it's on the, when they're voting?
A projection currently, yes, which is what I'm.
And you don't have that projection right now?
That's what I'm saying. We can project on a median home, which of course is inflated currently, but a $450,000 home approximately $600.
Okay, okay. And for the half a million dollars here, et cetera. I presume you have a full budget that you're, you're working off of plus what you're going to spend this money on or projected. For instance, I presume a helicopter isn't part of your normal, uh, equipment. So you have to have a contract with a consultant or somebody that comes in and flies it in and et cetera. So you have all of these rates and everything set up in. So we or anybody that want to look at your books can see how you're spending the money.
Yep. It's all public information. It's approved. The, the budget is approved annually through the North Country EMS Board that is comprised of elected and appointed officials from Calitz County, Clark County and Town of Yakalt. So Calitz County is represented on our board. They've approved this, uh, resolution to come to the Commissioners. That's how it arrives here. Then it goes to the vote for the public. The public is free to ask any questions that they like. Um, and so that's part of that transparency. We're happy to provide any information.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hey. Any other questions?
I think I just.
I think I just received an email from Carolyn that tells us. I'm going to find it, of course.
I was hoping that Emily would be on this meeting to explain. It is a difficult thing to explain how the taxes are collected, but the amounts for the excess levy are in front of me from twenty twenty-one. In twenty twenty-one, to be collected in twenty twenty-two was a total amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and thirteen. And then in now and to be collected in twenty twenty-four or to be voted on in twenty twenty-four and collected in twenty twenty-five, the amount is five hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty. That's for the excess levy, nothing for the regular ten-year levy that they have.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any others?
I guess I want to, not sure if I, what I heard correctly, there was an excess levy like this done three years ago, was collected in twenty twenty-two?
Ran in twenty-one, collected in twenty-two.
To cover operating years twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four?
Correct.
Okay. And so that number was collected before was three hundred and what thousand?
Three fifty-two.
Three fifty-two? And so in that three years, we're up over two hundred thousand more expecting.
Yeah, so essentially that covers the excess and so the North Country operation is growing, so that's primarily going to focus on staffing. We we mentioned yesterday, one of the things that we're incorporating in our operation is a essentially a paramedic that would come to your house in a non-emergent setting. So it's Clark County is moving in the direction of what they, it's it's called a CARES program nationally. But essentially, when folks get discharged from the hospital, they need follow-up medical care, but not necessarily an ambulance. They don't need to go to the emergency room, but they have questions, they need help with their medications. Anything medical related, either discharged from the hospital or you call and set up an appointment, the community care paramedic system essentially comes to your house and helps you with whatever you need. So in order to focus on that and also incorporate the fact that we're growing and projected over the next three to four years, we're adding positions. Obviously, that comes with an increased cost.
Earlier, I think I heard you reference volunteers. Where's the volunteer line cut off at?
Not for paramedics, any of these on an ambulance.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't figure they were going to volunteer free time.
Yeah, so the rescue team, well, we we can't, it's actually a medical program directive in Clark County that we can't put medic volunteers on ambulances nor would it be a great idea just because of all the factors involved. But the volunteer, the rescue team is a volunteer team. And so that's, there are medical providers that function in that capacity on the rescue team. But when we're talking about an ambulance that shows up to your home, those are, those are full-time medical professionals.
Agreed.
Hi, I just had a question about the CARES program that you were just talking about. How is that different than what home health would provide that is covered through insurance?
That's what we're trying to find, to figure out. It's new in the county and so North Country has not gone down this road previously. I think the CARES program in Clark County started in like twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, started to kind of pick up traction. It's a national thing that's catching on. Actually, in the state of Oregon, you're required to, I think state law designates it home health or a paramedic, a community care paramedic is required to follow up after so long of being discharged from the hospital. And so that takes percentage-wise, I think they're saying a couple percent off of the readmit side of the coin when it comes to folks being discharged. And so the entire EMS system as a whole is trying to figure out ways to take pressure off of the system. Because as Calhoun County and Clark County grows, it's overwhelming emergency services ability to actually, you know, put paramedics, ambulances, fire engines on every single call in a reasonable amount of time. And so we had some discussion yesterday about mutual aid and and things of that nature. It's it's something that occurring more frequently. And so with the community care paramedic, the objective there is to meet folks in their homes so that they're not waiting so long or not getting help for such a long period of time that then they have to take an ALS ambulance out of the system, you know, and and the potential is that we could see folks previous to needing that ambulance and hopefully eliminate the, some of the needs or the pressure.
So would, so why? I'm trying to think through what you just said. Why would, why would you use the CARES program instead of the home health program that that would be covered by insurance and then you wouldn't have to cover that cost? Does that make sense? Like why? It feels redundant to me, I guess.
Yeah, I think that I can't speak to how home health entirely works because it's not part of emergency services. But this specifically focuses my understanding with the CARES program. And so we're just, North Country is just starting down this road because we are rural. And there's, I I think, I think there's not, it's a little more difficult for folks to get services in their home, especially out and, you know, if we're going to Cougar or things of that nature. The relationship between home health and the ability for private citizen to use that, I I'm not sure what that mechanism is. We're just at the very beginning of exploring that.
I I guess maybe I would suggest then, as, and I don't know how this would work. If if you're sort of stepping into the home health arena, could you then be reimbursed by, I mean Medicare? You know, there's certain parameters that have to be met for Medicare to cover that for most patients or private insurance. Is that something that you could look into then to ease? Since you're kind of stepping into that role, then to ease the tax burden on the?
Yeah, absolutely. So the CARES program is, a lot of their positions are funded through grant funding. And so that's risky because if your grant funding runs out, then of course you have a bunch of people that are performing this function that you no longer have funding for. And so, yes, there's, there's an opportunity for that, but when I say we're at the very beginning, I mean, we're, we've preliminary meeting, so I don't have a lot of information for that. But what I, what I do believe as the administrator of the agency is if we can put somebody in your home that's already showing up on an ambulance, it's a resource that you need. And we have the funding to do that, that could potentially make a difference in your healthcare that you might not have access to, I think we should do that.
Right, no, I get that. I'm just trying to figure out. It it just does feel a little redundant with the home health programs that are out there. And I understand, I know people that work in home health that they have a lot of area to cover and they can't always get there when they needed, but maybe if you could tap into their, since you're stepping into that role, tap into how they're financed, that would, that would take a burden off of your budget and a burden off the taxpayers.
Yeah, I I agree. And and what you're suggesting, the billing of Medicare, Medicaid, that's something that we're looking into also. Something to to consider, we're also figuring out what the demand is. And so this individual is still going to be a paramedic in the sense that they can jump on an ambulance if we have a significant event and they can take people to the hospital. So it's not just an in-home provider, it's still a paramedic that can be part of the EMS system.
So so the challenge with funding the program that you have is that it's based on the property tax. And as we all know, property tax cannot grow more than one percent a year.
Yep.
But it's, but with inflation being higher than that, you're you're caught in that squeeze. And the excess levy gives you that cushion as well as the the forward thinking and planning for for additional services. We face the same kind of constraints. But we have access to sales tax and a few other taxes that that do grow with inflation. So it's more critical for buyer districts and library districts and EMS districts because you're only using property tax. So I I understand the the challenge that you have. And I think, I think the the record so far is that the people in the districts support the program. And so hopefully that'll happen this year too.
We sure hope so. Yeah, the 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 challenge is with, especially with rural EMS is that private companies, that their business model is is built on volume. And there's not the volume there, but the people are still there. And so the public formed this entity in the seventies, it was born out of need and the need's still there today, hasn't changed. But of course, the public still should get to vote and they do, and they historically supported it, so.
Excuse me, I just want to be sure Medicare is such that essentially, no matter what pot it's coming from, it is still taxpayer taxpayer dollars. So I try to stay away from arguing those nuances. The other one is I want to thank you for nice, clear, splendid answers, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Agreed, been very informative. Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess I want to follow up with based on what I believe the auditor said earlier was that this is a fifty-seven percent increase over the previous ask. And that's in addition to the ten-year levy. I guess my concern is, at what level has it been growing over time every three years? Is it bumping up thirty percent or fifty percent every three years? But the other thing is, is I believe what you stated earlier, on a four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, a six hundred dollar property tax increase in one year, that's a hell of a jump for, in all of a sudden, one year, I I would think a lot of people are going to flare their wings with that one.
Something that's important to remember is it's not repetitive. So we collect that money in one year, one time, to be expended over three to four years.
Right.
That, the other thing that I'll say is, I've been working for North Country EMS for almost fourteen years now. And our staffing model has been two full-time ambulances since two thousand and eleven. It's not arguable that our call volume is increasing and our transports are increasing. And so at some point, you risk not being able to serve the community that's paying for the resource. It it's, it's goes without saying that people cost money. And so we're now at a point where we have to add staff. It's, that's just what it is. So more people, more calls, more ambulances, that's how it works.
And population growth is going to dictate that, absolutely. And and more people in the back country and all those good things. I guess I'm wondering, when is your next ten-year levy come up?
Twenty-nine, I believe, twenty twenty-nine. And so the the maximum levable amount in that ten-year levy is fifty cents per thousand.
Right, and you're only at thirty-eight now, you said?
Yes.
Okay. What do you anticipate you're going to be at in twenty-nine?
I I can't tell you that. I really don't know. I mean, I, North Country prides itself historically on stretching the taxpayer dollars. This is not a, I want to say wasteful in public safety because public safety is what it is. You you don't need it until you need it. And then if you need it and it's not there, it's a real problem, right? So we're aware of the fact that we're using taxpayers' money to provide this resource. But we would be remiss if we didn't say, hey, at some point, we have to add staff here, and that's what we're doing. And so it's important for the public to keep in mind that this resource was important in the seventies. It's remained to be important now. Of course, it's going to cost more money because as I said before, people cost money. I mean, where we used to spend a hundred thousand dollars for an ambulance, now an ambulance is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we replace those every, you know, six, eight, ten years, depending on the where. You know, people used to make twenty dollars an hour, now they're making forty dollars an hour. We we have to be competitive. The other thing that makes North Country unique is that we serve such a large area. We can't hire individuals straight out of paramedic school. So for example, the people that we have working at North Country have been in the emergency medical service business for ten to fifteen years before we put them on a North Country ambulance because they might spend three to four hours with you in the back of that ambulance, you're not seeing a doctor, you're seeing our paramedic. And so obviously, there's a cost associated with that.
Appreciate me sitting here being, and us being able to listen to this explanation and go through the details. I just don't know how you're going to relate that to the person who all of a sudden sees a six hundred dollar increase on their property tax as what they're voting on. Because you've got a limited amount of space to put that information in a voter's pamphlet.
Yeah, so there will be a flyer in May and then and also a mailer in July prior to the vote. And so it's, it's very important to understand that it's six hundred dollars. But you know, if you average that out over the years that you're paying for this ambulance service, it pales in comparison to what an AMR bill would be if you have those folks show up one time at your house. So
Like I said, I understand what you're telling me in here. It's getting that message across to the person who's going to look at that.
I agree.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other? Not seen any, we'll call for a vote to put this on the ballot. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Appreciate your time. I I I enjoyed it, learned educated myself, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes. Maybe if you wouldn't mind, could you send me an email?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next motion item. Cog, Bill.
Good morning. Haven't seen you for a long time. Just a real quick summary, the Calhoun Waukaiakum Council of Governments is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the region. Every ten years, we have the opportunity to explore our boundary in order to enhance much-needed transportation planning, especially in Woodland and Kalamah. The Council of Governments Board of Directors is seeking concurrence by the local agencies to expand the metropolitan planning area to a countywide area instead of just the Longview urban area. And this is an allowable process under federal statute. In a nutshell, that's kind of where we are. The cog and planning is an essential service for planning for transportation to make sure we have resources and facilities long-term to meet our needs. So with that, I'll stop and answer questions.
So so Bill, you you mentioned a a couple of things, including the federal government, the Metropolitan Planning Organization is a requirement by the feds for approving or prioritizing federal and state grants that come to cities and counties for transportation improvements and enhancements.
Correct. We're the gatekeeper for all federal dollars that comes into the region for transportation purposes. And the cog Board of Directors basically is is a gatekeeper for all those funds.
And by going countywide, we increase the share of the county in the local match for this program. Because obviously, we included all the, all the unincorporated areas, not just those surrounding Longview and Kelso.
Correct.
So so we've, we have actually spent probably arguably more time discussing transportation problems in the woodland area than probably any other urban area. The dollars still come into the larger jurisdictions, but it seems to me to make sense to include Woodland and Kalamah in this planning area. So they get the access and the support from the local council when they make application to the federal government.
As long as I've been up here, I've never heard the argument that Woodlands' traffic problems could be solved if they were a member of the MPO. So that that leads me to ask, is it, are you saying that absolutely no federal dollars would come to help exit twenty-one problem in the woodland area unless they were in the MPO?
Not at all. Federal dollars will hopefully come to Woodland either way, whether it's part of the Metropolitan Planning Organization or not. What might change is the staff capacity to help them to seek federal dollars.
What happens when everybody is in an MPO? Does that, this return us back to where we are, where everybody's on an equal? screen again?
I don't know. Um, it, uh, it'll be many, many centuries before everyone's in an MPO, but, uh, um, MPOs are very competitive for dollars. And, uh, just because an area's in an MPO doesn't automatically mean they're gonna get additional resources or, or, or assistance from the federal government.
If I go out to Hood River, they're in an MPO also?
MP, Hood River is not in an MPO.
If, if they were in an MPO, when, are they eligible to be in an MPO?
They are not eligible to be in an MPO.
Because?
Because of their size. You have to have an urban area of over fifty thousand population to be eligible for a Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Okay, and in this case, in this, uh, request, you're, you're wanting to include all of Calis County as an MPO?
That is the recommendation, uh, that came up through the Technical Advisory Committee and the COG Board of Directors.
The Technical Advisory Committee is generally the county engineers' staff or the city engineering staff that
Correct.
that work with the grants.
So in this case, was, uh, the Calis County engineer involved in this?
Susan was, uh, Eugenus was involved in the tech, Technical Advisory Committee discussions and, um, as was probably one or two other staff people from the county.
Um, we hear, um, because I, I go to most of the council meetings for the cities and in Woodland, I've heard them last couple of years, they've applied for federal funds for, for, uh, exit twenty-one.
Right.
And I think the last year, something had been added and, and they said, well, that will help us move up the ladder cuz it, it checks another box. So if they're part of the MPO, does that, and I'm not saying I like the system, but does that check another box for them?
It potentially opens the door for additional resources that communities outside of an MPO may not have. But it is not gonna make or break Woodlands or Klamah's efforts to get more dollars.
Let's say, Bill, that, uh, we decide not to do it today, can we do it in a month?
The Council of Governments is up against a deadline to make a decision on what the new metropolitan planning area will be. Um, and WashDOT and ODOT are both pushing us to do it yesterday. Um, a month delay probably isn't a big deal. But at some point, the COG Board has to make a decision on what that boundary will be and forward it to both states for govern, uh, uh, concurrence by the governor of each state in order to move the process forward.
If we, if we exceed that deadline of, uh, let me call it a bureau, bureaucratic deadline, uh, it will come again, I would assume.
Every ten years, so the next, after, after the next census, uh, and a new Longview urban area uh, boundary is set, then the COG will have to adjust the boundary once again. Unless we go to a countywide boundary this year, then alls we would do is in ten or eight, ten years would be to, um, um, provide a letter of concurrence that the boundary would stay the same or we could, I guess we could lessen the boundary somewhere down the road.
On, on issues like this, it reminds me of Ronald Reagan's admonition, which really says the closest thing to eternal life is a government program. And, uh, I've certainly noticed that through, through my lifetime. And it's typically a non-reversible move or irreversible. So if we can, if we go into it tomorrow or this afternoon, we say yay, uh, after a couple of years, I imagine we won't be able to change our minds. We'll be in there and the machinery advances and.
I, I would say that, uh, the Board of Directors of the Council of Governments would have the authority to change that boundary at some point in the future. And if, if it, the community consensus was that it should be reduced in size and, and just include the urban area or just include the I-five corridor or whatever the, the decision was, the COG Board could make that uh, decision and reduce the size of the Metropolitan Planning Area in the future, based on my reading of the statute and, and I could be incorrect. But there's nothing in there that I saw that said we can't change it and reduce it, uh, at some point.
I suspect you're, that that's accurate, just because my, my comment or question would have tied more into, once you set some wheels going, it, it, the inertia is almost impossible to undo.
I don't disagree with you.
So we know of, um, at least two urban areas, that is developments that are at urban standards that are not within the MPO right now, in addition to the three cities that we've mentioned. And that is the Tootles Silver Lake Development, which in, in the east end of Silver Lake, that's a, that's a pretty urbanized area. And, uh, a, a much smaller neighborhood called, um, Woodbrook up near Ostrander. Those are, you know, uh, uh, they're urban neighborhoods and it's kind of, kind of out of place. And, uh, they don't have access to the Metropolitan's funding options. So I think, you know, countywide, make sure we cover all those urban areas that, that might be separated from the, the core. The, the other, the other irony was that the Census Bureau did make a change in the current boundaries by adding Castle Rock. The only city in Calis County that actually lost population in the last census. I don't know why they were added, because their population is going down, where the two cities that grew the most, Klamah and Woodland, are not, were not included. I, that may be federal logic, but it doesn't make sense to me. And, uh, but rather than play the games, just, just, I think we just ought to add the, do the simple thing and, and add the whole county. That's, that's what I would support.
I, 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 the only thing I struggle with, I, I, I sit here and I try to say, what are the benefits? What are the, the, what are the pluses and minuses? I mean, does it, if we add that, does it, does it tie us into any other restrictions from the state or, or feds? I mean, I hate to, I feel like I'm kind of, you kind of sit here as a guard, guardian over, over people's rights and I don't. If we add in Woodland, then does somehow GMA move our way or does, does other things come into play? And I don't know that.
This would not impact GMA or anything like that. Um, so I, I'm not aware of any challenges that this would create for.
Create that would add more burden on any.
No new burden to locations within the county.
And on the, the plus side, it gives them access to work with you if they want to?
It, it opens the door for some potential funding that MPOs are eligible for. And it gives access to, stronger access or more staff capacity to help them to work through transportation challenges.
I guess I'm wondering if in some way, this is just another layer of bureaucracy, which is a duplication of services that already exist. Uh, the question earlier about federal funding for exit twenty-one, Woodland area, uh, I believe the statement was it wouldn't, uh, if they did not join, it would not hinder their ability to get federal grants or federal money. So I guess I'm wondering what the, what the gain is here. Uh, and what is lost by having this not go forward the way it's written?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was trying to, trying to get at a little bit. And I, um, it doesn't sound like there's any more restrictions. It's, if Woodland wants to work with them, like I said, I, I don't know if in there, I still not clear if, if they can send a, if the next time they send a grant to the, or a grant request to the feds and they say, now we're part of the, the MPO or whatever it is, does that help them in another box? You know, they have a screwy scoring system on some of these grant requests on, the more boxes you check, you get up there. And I don't know if it helps them or hurts them or it's just neutral.
Yeah, um, many years ago now, I sat on the WIRAT twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, committee, uh, and, uh, at that time, the commissioners had signed a two thousand and six document that said, over the next twenty years, uh, twenty-seven, uh, private exempt wells could be drilled in Calis County, but no more. Well, we put up such a fuss and talked about that. And I remember one part of the argument somewhere along there was, uh, a proposal to put, mm, put meters on the wells. And, uh, one of the justifications DOE had on that was, don't worry about it, that, you know, we don't have the means to check on this stuff anyhow. We don't have the staff to do it and we don't have this and that. And I'm thinking, oh, that's how we get hooked in. When I take a look at this, the, the, the quest for dollars seems fundamental in here. And it also sounds like it's the typical government sort of extortion program. You know, we, we have talked even on something that is very upsetting to all of us, the meals on wheels, uh, wherein we'd like some competition. We'd, we'd like to figure out how to do that without having to go through a single entity because competition is a good idea. Anyhow, I see all those things, uh, breaking down. Now, yesterday, you mentioned there was forty thousand dollars. That's income to the COG?
By, the expanded population level of a countywide MPO would generate around forty thousand dollars a year for the program. So it's, it's not a, a huge amount of money. It's, it's just what it is. It's federal dollars.
Which means it's your dollars.
Yes, and my dollars, out of my pocket as well.
Any other questions?
The, the Census Bureau added them to the metropolitan area. It's their federal designation.
I, I would guess it probably has something to do with the bridge and connecting.
It, it has to do with distance and di- density, uh, adjacent density. And, and so there's lots of by-state metropolitan planning organizations. When you have a population center next to a population center, the census, when they designate an urban area, doesn't care if there's a state or a county or whatever line in between. Yes, sir. Truthfully, they already all have a seat at the board.
I mean, a voting or non-voting seat?
Voting. They, they have a voting seat currently.
Just as a reminder, i- if, you may want to repeat what you said, but it should be in a microphone because the people can't hear you.
Well, join the questioning board. Uh, so I'm, I'm curious, those of us that drive up and down the roads, et cetera, et cetera, are seeing significant deterioration throughout our state on the roads. And at the same time, our governor and the taxes are collecting great funds there. So, uh, for instance, I can drive up the road up here to interstate and I can say it's almost in places a canal for running water down the road, et cetera. So what does COG have to do? How does COG do any good for us in our communities and in our area and helping get money put into the road system?
The Council of Governments is a planning agency. The Metropolitan Planning Organization as part of the COG is, uh, responsible for planning. As a result of some of the planning work we've done over the years, we now have a Lexington Bridge. We have a number of other things like that. We were instrumental in Tally Way road improvements years ago. Um, so we, we do contribute and we plan for things that usually happen somewhere in the far distance. And so what we're doing today will impact five, ten years from now perhaps. Um, it, it's just the nature of long-term planning, uh, um.
So if we didn't have COG, we still have the state, state system. So I'm, I'm still trying, what, how does COG fit into the COG between, uh, getting things done? Who, who do you give your recommendations to?
Local member agencies, the state, all, uh, our long-term, long-range transportation plan has recommendations for all agencies that do transportation. So the cities, the counties, uh, the state all have elements within our plan that impact them. We don't have a whole lot of authority to do a whole lot, but we do planning.
So, Bill, along those lines, it might be interesting, you mentioned the Lexington Bridge. Could, uh, you've got the history on that? Maybe you could.
Not, not a whole lot, but, uh, that was one of those projects that, uh, uh, was identified as a, a need uh, to have a, a bridge crossing and, uh, Commissioner Weber may know more than I do on this, but it was recommended, uh, or identified as a major need. Uh, the COG did some studies, did some initial work, helped, uh, identify possible funding, federal funding sources, uh, helped the county, I think, was the lead on the project, but helped move that project forward. And, uh, so we have a bridge today. Uh, and, uh, we're working today on, with Senator Wilson and others on efforts to try and figure out how we're gonna replace the Lewis and Clark Bridge. And that may be another thing that's five or ten or fifteen years from now before we see tangible progress on that. But, uh, probably should have started, uh, twenty, we did start twenty years ago. We did a study twenty years ago on the Lewis and Clark Bridge, uh, identifying needs and opportunities for moving forward and, and, uh, didn't quite go too far. But, uh, as happens with plans. But, uh, we've had our finger in, in most major transportation investments that have happened in the community. We just had that touch to those projects five or ten or fifteen years before they move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, from, I've only been here a little, little over a year, going on a year and a half, close to. And I, I don't, I'm not the liaison to that board, but I do sit in to some of the meetings sometimes. And what I've, uh, observed, if I can give you an observation, is they'll kind of identify as a group, major issues, uh, Lewis and Clark Bridge is one. IWA was, was for a while and that's kind of been put on different things. And then that gets communicated to our legislative body. Like you'll see Senator Wilson or you'll see one of the others chime in and, and try to see what, what we're seeing down here. So they kind of, kind of work off of what that group has put together or it's a, it's a part of it. So I don't, I, they're, they're not out there doing physical stuff. Uh, it's.
It's a long-term planning agency.
Long-term planning, then they use, then our electives will use some of that long-term planning to try and drive some stuff through the legislature. That's just been quick observation from the times I've sit in.
So let's say that the commissioners approve this. COG is now representing the county. How do you, COG, represent us in the community in saying, okay, do we do a report? Do we do, uh, some sort of report saying, uh, the top ten items that we see on our, uh, work list for two thousand twenty-four is this, 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 this? And you get some community input. What's your integration with us, with the community? And representing some sort of communication, uh, supposedly representing the commissioners and to the state? Supposedly representing the commissioners and to the state.
Um, one example of something we're working on or will start working on later this year uh, is a SR four eleven corridor management plan. Uh, so looking at uh, Westside Highway from Longview, Kelso area up to Castle Rock, uh, trying to identify um long-term needs for that highway system, uh, moving forward. Uh, we would most likely have a variety of public input sessions, asking for public engagement involvement uh, to help generate some of those long-term ideas on what might happen uh, along that corridor. Uh, that goes into a plan. The county somewhere down the road uh, would uh, pick up the plan as, as they were starting to look at uh, highway improvements between here and there. Um, and, and use that kind of as a reference of what might work and what's changed and what do we need to do? Uh, a- as they start to look at the actual improvements down the road. Does that help?
Okay, but if I look at Westside Highway, I always have alternatives. I have I five, I have the the other road, I have the road going over the top of the hill to get around. If I'm driving south down Interstate ninety and the freeway's down, we're dead in the water.
I understand that.
Okay, so where is the priority on doing something about that?
On, you said Highway ninety, did you mean?
I mean, I have five, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, I just wanted to clarify, make sure I was on the same page with you. Um, between Woodland going south, we have done some preliminary long-range planning work to put a new bridge across the Lewis River from the bottoms going south into Clark County. Uh, establishing a parallel route from Woodland south uh, into Clark County, the establishing a parallel route between Woodland and Kalama is much more challenging. Um, we've looked at uh, potential uh, options for that and there aren't very many. Um, uh, that wouldn't cost billions of dollars and so they haven't made on too many plans. Uh, but we have looked at, uh, there is some interest in um, the Six Rivers Trail, which is a bike pedestrian trail connecting Woodland and uh, Kalama. Um, uh, there's challenges, significant challenges, even getting a bike trail between the two communities. Uh, but one of the options that is being explored uh, is to do some kind of a freeway crossing uh, to connect the two communities, bike and pedestrian, which might also include uh, enough uh, bridge uh, capacity to handle emergency vehicles that would at least allow emergency vehicles to get north and south across. Uh, if there was a major slide on I five, that doesn't help you and me as consumers needing to get home or to get to our work or whatever. Uh, but those are some of the types of long-term things that we're looking at. And I think there's a lot of understanding of the need for parallel routes on I five, but um, dollar amounts are, are fairly challenging with that Kalama to Woodland segment and, and I'm not sure anyone's got an appetite to push for a, a couple billion dollar fix on that one.
Not sitting here, but if we have a national emergency of some sort or another and you have the place completely shut down, all of a sudden it's now a big, big issue. So you're the planning organization that we're just talking to for expressing the importance of that perspective is what I would, I'm hearing here.
Yes, if you look in the long-range uh, transportation planning study that the COG just recently compiled, there is discussion in that about the need for parallel routes of I five through Calis County. So it is in the planning things, the solution has not been found.
So where do we, the public, get your, the information that you're having these meetings and our planning perspective?
They, they will usually be out on social media, they'll be in the paper, they'll be uh, on the radio if we can get them to cover it. Um, so whenever we do public outreach, we do our best to get the word out to the public.
So why wouldn't we have maybe an annual presentation right here on what is your upgrade each year or something like that?
If invited, I'd be happy to come do that.
Okay. Okay, to inform the public.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So if I might, one of the things that is bothersome to me uh, is we, we tend to make emotional decisions rather than pragmatic decisions. So I, I take a look at an engineering formulation of some of the problems that should we build a Lexington Bridge? Should we build a, another bridge? Should we fix the bridge we have? All of those can lend themselves to a rational model. It's ridiculous to try and compare uh, things that are totally unequal. Now, there are elements, it's difficult to get two billion dollars to bu- build a bridge and it's easier to get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do something else. My, my point is, it's a, it's a kind of a of a, of a dicey point. People really want to want themselves to be heard about how important something is, but we can actually quantify some of the key issues like uh, what, what is the risk versus the stakes of the Lewis and Clark Bridge becoming unusable? We know the tonnage that goes through there, we know the commerce that goes through there. We could actually do a computation, say it's worth so much. But we never really do that. So when we, when we're thinking of adding the entire Calis County into this, I'm scratching my head and saying, I, I don't see how that's gonna help you make a better or stronger decision. I, I do like the, the uh, the concept of people getting to, uh, getting together. Uh, and actually getting something done, but we seem to have a penchant, it's gotta be formalized before we can do anything useful. I hearken back to the WIRAT twenty-five, twenty-six days when we filled the GMR with people who didn't want the county shut down for a DOE rule that the commissioners had already signed and presumably had put into play. That should have ended it, but the people got together and said, no. And uh, it's such a sore point in some sense that uh, it's left on, untouched. We've been operating since two thousand and six. Excuse me, essentially in defiance of the two thousand and six agreement that the commissioners signed. That's people power and, but, but it's common sense power. It, it's, everybody likes something until they have to pay for it. But when they pay for it with their time or their own dollars, and I know it's meaningful, meaningful to them. Um, I'll give you an example of something that adds into this vexation. I don't know where the uh, COG was when the state, the taxpayer is paying like twenty-six million dollars to have a bridge fly over to the golf course area uh, in Kelso. Even though Kelso is my largest constituency, I tried to take that twenty-six away and move that elsewhere. I couldn't do it, it was uh, the, the bureaucracy said, no, no, you've got to do that for grade crossings. Meanwhile, I hear a bunch of grade crossings down in North Kelso area, which truly are pretty dangerous. Uh, they're on uh, unprotected, if you will, while the grade crossings here. Anyhow, uh, I, I, I just don't know how this is gonna help us do more sensible assessments of things.
Any other questions? I don't think we have a motion, so if we wanna do that, certainly your prerogative.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we uh, approve the motion to support expanding the Metropolitan Planning Organization boundary to include uh, uh, the entire Calis County.
Okay. They have a motion on the floor? Any other question, comments?
I'm still not sure I understand what is lost by this not happening. Uh, even after all this discussion, I understand it's another planning agency and it, it still feels like there's gonna be and we've talked about the Woodland exit, it sounds like we're just gonna put another layer of somebody else working on planning and, and trying to solve problems. I don't know what that gains, for example. And like you said, Woodland's not even included in this. Is that right?
Woodland's not included now, it would be if we pass.
If you pass this?
Well, it, it's, it's a resolution of support, the final decision hasn't been made yet, so that would be up to the COG board. So this is a letter, basically a letter supporting expanding it.
They're, they're basically a planning agency. I, I'm really trying to, I, I, I can't. I'm with you, I don't know that there's, I can find benefits, I don't, I don't think I can find a ton of detriments either. I don't know that it's it's adding anything, I don't, Woodland can use them if they want to, uh, they can use them now if they want to. And unfortunately, in, in this world now, you can't get anything through without years and years of plans. I mean, it'll take a decade at least to do anything about Lewis and Clark, Clark Bridge. And we've been talking about it. I was back in Washington DC in February talking about it and we've been talking about it before, for that, but absent some ship hitting that and doing something, nothing's gonna happen for a long time. But if you, if you never have plans in place, you got, they won't even look at you. I don't, I don't know, Steve, I don't.
Almost, almost all plans are based around some type of an idea of guaranteed population growth. There's a lot of discussion nowadays about population implosion. That, especially with the current generation, that our reproductive rate is far less than replacing ourselves. And if population's going down, I've said for forty years, anybody sitting in an elected chair can be a hero quite easily when growth and progress is exploding. That's pretty easy to manage. When it's falling on its face and things are going down the rat hole, that's when things get tough and not everybody can manage that. But there's always two sides to a coin. There's the possibility that it's gonna go really well and everything's gonna move forward and you can draw up all the plans in the world and say, yep, this is how we're gonna pay for it because we know that the population's gonna get bigger. And then there's a flip side, it can go in the rat hole and not come out very well. Forty years ago, we were gonna have twenty-six nuclear power plants because they had that little hockey stick growth that somebody drew up and said, look at what's gonna happen here. A few years later, seven and a half billion dollars of default on bonds. Five nuclear power plants and none of them were operational. When that default happened. So I'm just, I'm just.
Plans are always best guesses. I mean, I can go back to the seventies and, and tell you, they said this and this was gonna happen and it never did, you know, it's always best guesses and
Yep.
And, and trust me, if I thought this was adding another thumb on, on, on the people, I'd have some real heartburn, but I can't, I can't see that, I can't. I, I lost it work and, and it just and I'm not recognizing that anything like that will.
That's what I hear, we're not tipping the scales either direction because I, they can't see the value, good or bad.
Yeah, if I might on that very same topic, we are in a place where presumably we are presumed innocent until proven otherwise. And the same thing here, presumably uh, we ought to apply that to government programs because they do have eternal life. E- the forty thousand is insignificant, but it's still an indication that there's nothing for free. And uh, un- unless I know exactly what what the, the but I have to understand the forecast and what, what ramifications are. Dealing with any government entity, even at the local level, I've learned, you've got to be very careful. Anything that you say or do can and will be used against you. The taxpayer.
So you're in a position of you don't know what's good or bad about it, so we're gonna move forward with it.
Well, well, it's, I, I think I would respectfully disagree with, with that analysis. We have some metropolitan areas that get a type of advantage going through the metropolitan planning process. But not all urban areas in Calis County. There's a, there's a uh, there's an imbalance. You've got urban areas, as I've mentioned, in Woodland and Kalama that are, that are growing. And we have several urbanized areas, pockets out in the county that don't have access to that that, that planning advantage. So I, you know, I, I don't think we should be dividing the county up between the haves and the have-nots. I think we should all be in it together. So uh, we currently don't, don't, don't operate that way. An urban problem in, in Silver Lake doesn't have the same access to funds because they don't get to go through this planning process. So is it a huge major deal? It, it isn't a huge major deal. But I don't like the imbalance. I mean, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be having uh, you know, some metropolitan areas getting access and others not having as much access.
You, you bring up an interesting point, uh, I've been puzzled for a long time between Kelso is viewed differently than Longview. Longview is a entitlement city or whatever the term is.
So that is, that is for community development block grants?
Well.
Different set of federal laws.
It's also.
But in transportation planning, you know, Longview and Kelso are in the same metropolitan area, so.
And uh, uh, the dock recording fees. Um, Longview can keep their dock recording fees. Kelso can it also?
I think, I think they can pull out, yeah. There was a, there was a.
Anyhow, the fact that there's even a question points out to this level of consistency. Uh, I, I don't disagree with you. I, I'm strongly in favor of uh, trying to do away with the government to use of divide and conquer. Uh, I pick on you all the time for the left-handed violin player. I mean, we need special programs for musicians or for left-handed violin players. And then for musicians or just everybody that is skilled.
Or you have a plan for left-handed violin players who have to play with the right hand. That's what happened to me. I'm left-handed, but I have, you know.
Oh, is that right?
But I don't have a, it's, it there's not two ways to play the violin, so.
They don't make left-handed violins?
Did you see the violin player? It has no arms, has no arm. It's pretty amazing. It's on Facebook.
Not everything like it's fair.
The, the only other thing I would say, and this is just from observation, like I said, I'm not I, I think I'm the alternate, but I'm not the, the main liaison in there, but I do sit in once in a while and listen to them is I, I've heard our, our state senator or our reps on there and and from listening to them, I get to impress his day garner value from from having uh, the organization down here for what it's worth.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll call for a vote on the resolution, those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I would vote aye on this. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Thanks.
Thank you much. Turned off my microphone.
Uh, before we get into public comments, we have no no special workshop this afternoon. The next one we have is uh, next Wednesday at two thirty, we'll have the lodging, sales tax and cumulative reserve discussion, you'll um, I'm pretty sure Kathy will probably run some of that. Okay, well, let me get through this and then we'll get into public comment, okay? And so there's no, we have a regular one thirty this afternoon with uh, uh, public works, but we have no two thirty, we don't have anything till next Wednesday. Okay? Tomorrow, yeah.
Tomorrow, yeah. Yeah, thanks. Okay.
So just to be clear, this afternoon we have?
No, no.
It was Wednesday.
She's correcting me over here. That's why I sit by her.
So I understand that we have been invited to meet with the Longview City Council to discuss homelessness policies? Is, are we going to schedule a meeting with them? Do we have to do public notice or are we gonna participate?
Well, I, I, I got an email from the mayor Boudreau yesterday and asked us if we wanted to be part of a workshop on, I believe it's the twenty-fourth, which would be next Thursday at five thirty.
Next Thursday, yeah.
And so I asked Kelly to forward that to you folks to see if you had an interest in that. I, I'm not sure what they expect to get accomplished, but I know it's a, it's a new council, so if they wanna sit down and we wanna have a conversation, I don't really have a issue with, with doing that with them. I know there's four new people there.
I understood, I understood the question was to discuss the dock recording status of Longview. Should they lump in with the county?
Yeah, I, I think their, their initial thing is, is to discuss whether they should keep their own homeless. They're trying to decide whether they keep their own homeless task force. And I think that conversation probably will revolve around some of the other issues.
If they keep their dock recording fees, they have to have by law their homeless housing task force and a five-year plan.
And the council has been trying to decide whether they wanna do that, so I think that that kind of spurred this conversation with us.
For me, that's kind of curious because there are arguments both ways in the sense that it seems duplication to have two housing homeless task forces.
Yeah.
But I really liked that they could, they should have control of their own dock recording fees.
And I think I've stated before, whichever direction they wanna go, I'm perfectly fine with.
Include me in on that.
Yeah. So, I guess Commissioner Weber, if we wanna participate in that, I can send answer back to the mayor and said, sure, we'll, we'll show up. We have that discussion if you'd like.
It's just that if the three of us show up or the two of us show up, we've gotta have a public notice as well, so we can do that. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm perfectly happy if, if only the chairman goes. Well, it's because we're, we're, we should start understanding, making decisions that go way beyond us is probably something to keep in mind.
Yeah. Well, then my response back to him is you'll, you'll at least see that everybody knows they're invited and definitely you'll, you'll see me over there. Okay? Okay, Ron, we had one hand that wanted to do. Could we take that first?
Oh, okay. I was gonna comment on your discussion on your homeless meeting.
Okay, let, we have Mr.
Okay, go ahead and do that.
Had his hand up, so let's let him go ahead and then we'll do that. Go ahead, Tom.
You, you can hear me okay, Commissioner Dahl?
Yeah, I can.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Considering the board and attendees to these meetings frequently discuss what are perceived to be onerous taxes and foolish spending, I wanted folks to be aware, and especially any fellow Longview taxpayers like Mr. Kozloski and Mr. Farrell, that the Longview City Council majority has proposed two resolutions for the April twenty-fifth meeting. These resolutions seek to force taxpayers to pick up the tab for the personal legal defense the four majority members are facing as a result of their actions surrounding the termination of Chris Swanson and the hiring of interim city manager Jim Dusha. Recall, over the past couple months, the council majority had multiple opportunities to hear from both city attorney Dana Giggler and WCIA lawyers, the taxpayers are already funding, but they either outright disregarded the legal advice they were given or as they did on February twenty-second, they deliberately voted to not hear what the WCIA attorney had to say on the matter. Setting aside the lawsuit myself and others have filed alleging unlawful actions have occurred through all of this, it should still disturb anyone who claims to be either a fiscal conservative or a proponent of individual accountability and responsibility that Eric Alverson and Keith Young are sponsoring these resolutions when they not only stand to personally gain from this pursuit of indemnification, they brought this legal quagmire on themselves with their cavalier behavior. I trust Ron and Steve will join me on the twenty-fifth, calling out this naked corruption at the public trough for what it is, outrageous and unacceptable. Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
Ron? Yes, we are. I just, Tom had had his hand raised, so I wanted to make sure.
Okay, I lost context of where we were. So regarding the homeless meeting, I understood from the city council meeting, Longview City Council meeting, that they had, had adopted the Callis County homeless plan. Now, that's what I, that's what I hear. So that would be, I presume, part of your meeting. The other part of the meeting is that we all know that the present program for Camp Alabama, Camp Hope, is not sustainable over time. Is that with the local taxpayers, that that plan does affect the entire county, not just Longview, and that it is not sustainable financially, and we still do not have good metrics, any metrics really, as what the outcome of that is doing for us, the people of the, of the county.
Yeah.
And the local community.
Yeah, and, and they are setting up as a workshop, so you would be able to attend and.
Yeah, but as a workshop and you guys representing us, we need some metrics.
Yeah.
Just pumping them into the camp and pumping them out the door into other subsistence housing programs does not solve the problem. It just makes another government continuum, continual chain of this, 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 and this. We don't know what real results are coming up.
They reopened the camp? I hadn't heard that. You keep referring to the camp. They, they haven't reopened the camp, have they?
Well.
Are you talking about, you're talking about Palico?
They're talking about the people passing through Camp Hope, et cetera, but just walking out of Camp Hope into other subsidized housing is not and into the continuum of, of being self-sufficient. So we need metrics that wanna say, what does this really do? What are we accomplishing? What is the expected end result?
I was just gonna remind you guys that this conversation's coming to fruition again because they put a hard stop date on their housing homeless task force. It's supposed to disband in April if they don't take action to reinstate it, from my understanding. And so that's why this discussion's coming back up because in January, they said April is gonna be their stop date for their housing homeless task force and they were gonna rejoin yours unless they repassed it. So.
Gotcha.
Or I might have that vice versa. They're, but it was set to discuss this in April. And so that's why it's coming back in front of you guys and why they're inviting you out.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, 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 we are, Ron.
Well, we're here.
Is the light on?
We're here in regards to the same old story. Over the weekend at Paradise Cove RV Park, a driver that is a drunk driver smashed into her motorhome and her car in the park. And prior to this, so you get the whole picture. She got into a car accident on Thursday night on Interstate five and rolled her car. So she was in the hospital at that time when this incident happened on Saturday. Or, yeah, or Friday, because the, the person that crashed into her motorhome and her vehicle at Paradise Cove is two doors down. The manager chose not to call law enforcement. But he called her cell phone. She's in the hospital on Delaudet because she got fractured ribs, fractured scapula, a small hole in her lung. I found out about this shortly after. And I called the authorities, Callis County Sheriff, and told them what had happened. And this person in the park, which his name is Rich Callaway, yeah, is a drinker from sunup to sundown. All right? And there's witnesses that prove that. Well, this individual supposedly was going to the store to get more alcohol and came back and coughed and passed out supposedly and hit her car and smashed into the front of her motorhome. The manager took pictures but chose not to call the cops because he called Joanna and she said she was totally not cognitive. Said, well, I'll, I'll handle it when I get back. Well, that's why I called law enforcement after I talked to Joanna. Talked to Kyle Souvenir, deputy. He said he wouldn't come out and he was gonna call Paul the next day and come out then. Never happened. So when Joanna got out of the hospital that day, she came out and saw her motorhome. We called the authorities. Officer Beetle and Officer Jaeger came out. They came out on the premise of letting us know that this happens on private property and couldn't be anything done. That was already decided before they got out of the cars. Officer Beetle was the officer in charge. Officer Jaeger was the assistant. I didn't say anything to them. I just observed. I was sitting with Joanna because she's not in good shape after this car accident she had. Officer Beetle said, well, we can't do anything about this. It's on private property. And as long as you guys exchange information, it's no big deal. Well, if they would've came out the night before when Kyle Souvenir said he wouldn't come out, according to the statutes in Washington State, DUIs, drunk driving, is roadways and highways unless it imposes a threat, an immediate danger to the, to the people in the area. Or if you have egress to Interstate five, Jackson Highway, or anything else. So it does mean elsewhere if you look under the forty-six, five hundred statute. She didn't talk about that. All she wanted to let us know is it's private property. We can't do anything about it. Well. Give me a moment here and I'll find it. It was challenged in court in the eighties on this elsewhere. And say you're at the Space Age Fuels and you're drunk. You can't, you get, you get a DUI. You get a drunk driving, guys, because you, you have the opportunity to harm folks. Okay, well, this individual ran into her car and her motorhome. All right? And it's Supreme Court against Day versus Day. And this is how it was categorized. If you're in eastern Washington and you're on a ranch, a five hundred acre ranch, and you're turning Brody's out in the middle of your property, and it happened with a young individual, actually, this is what this case was based on. Cops arrested him, but he was on his own property and he was within a gated community. That didn't uphold. But if you're, if you're at AMPM, Circle K, Space Age Fuels, or any private property that has public people or public access or has an egress to Interstate five or where we're at, it, it's DUI offense, okay? They didn't take any pictures when they came out on Saturday. They didn't take any, didn't go into the house because it damaged inside the home too. So I said, well, somebody needs to find out about the insurance. All right? So she's, because that's what she based her premise on. Well, as long as you guys decide to, and she's not in good shape and barely can walk. So Officer Jaeger goes over to this other guy's residence, RV, two spaces over. And he brings back. Does this, does this show up here? How do I show this? So everybody can see this.
Put it in front of here?
Nope.
It was right at the top in the middle.
Top of the middle?
That's not. No, that's not the camera. That's just, that's.
There it is, right there. That's the information she got. Some phone number and a low-digit number. Okay? This individual don't have insurance, according to her calling Dairy Land Insurance here in town. He, this is what the insurance information that was provided by Officer Jaeger when he came back from the residence. Then I mentioned to Joanna, you might wanna go over there and get some kind of information after the cops left, because they didn't do anything. They didn't do squat. Kyle Souvenir should've came out that evening when I called, even if it was after the accident and they moved the vehicle. Paul French, the manager of Paradise Cove, should've called the cops straight up. I guarantee you, if he would've hit the laundry room, he would've, but this is Joanna Barnhart and the issues we've had and the complaints against the county with the sheriff. And Kyle Souvenir chose not to and told me, oh, I'll come out tomorrow and I'll talk to him. Well, today, today, before I came to this meeting, I said, Mr. French, has Kyle Souvenir or any sheriff's department called you about this incident? No. Did, they only came out the day I called them again. The individual, Rich Callaway, provided her an insurance card dated twenty twenty. This is the problem we have here with law enforcement that we've had with Callis County. And I've been talking to you folks for months. Well, yesterday I got off the phone. She called me from the Washington State District, US Attorney's Office and is forwarding it to the FBI. Every bit of it now. Why didn't they do what they did? Because of the issues we've had, we've brought the complaints against the sheriff's department. I told the district or the state's attorney yesterday in the western region up in Seattle that can't file complaints against their internal affairs when they're the problem. I went in front of the judge also, Judge Hayes, and I'm gonna go back in front of him and let him know more about what's going on here. Write him a letter, have contact with him and see what he says. But the US attorney yesterday said, Mr. Johnson, we'll be forwarding all this. She said, it appears to me you have a litany of problems down there. I brought this stuff to your attention, fellas. And I, and she goes, Mr. Johnson, I, I saw in your emails that you were gonna go from county to county, just like I said in the council meeting in Longview the other night. I'm going to Olympia next. Then I'm going to Seattle and then I'm going to Montana, Brad Thurman's hometown or his kid's hometown, and I'm gonna let him know what's going on. We've had enough. Now, how does she get restitution? I told the park manager today, the guy's a severe alcoholic. His wife drinks out of a fifth of vodka constantly all day in front of their trailer. They don't have jobs. And he drinks from sunup to sundown. And he drinks from sunup to sundown. There'll be a bag of beer cans. I said, Paul, you've seen this stuff. The officers did nothing. Did they? We don't even know if this gentleman has a driver's license. And you know what? You know what one of the witnesses said? He drives to the store because he can't walk to the store. And I want to say something else because I'm done. And if people don't want to face this stuff any further. There was a drunk driving up at Shell Station two weeks ago. That person went to jail. They handed the keys to another suspended drunk driver. And if they want to talk to me about it, bring it on. They might want to look into their stuff. Because I have it firsthand that that happened by the individual that drove the vehicle. Do you understand what we have going on here? And I'll tell you what the, the U S Attorney told me. She goes, Mr. Johnson, have you talked to the Board of Commissioners? They need to handle this. That's exactly what she said. I forwarded the information I told you about the Federal Bureau of Investigation originally. And she says, I'll get it to the right people. She said, we'll prosecute, they investigate. Mr. Thurman's leadership has led this into a hole. And like I said before, if there's been any officer shot or anything happened. It's his leadership is a problem here that will present it for later or now. Just like I said. David Brain cover-up Tacoma, Washington, shot his wife in front of their kids and shot himself. And then officers come, come forward later? I don't have anything against these officers and I think Officer Jaeger's a good man. I think he's a decent fella. But I watched him out there shrug his shoulders. When he was out there, when that Officer Beetle, I think, uh, directed him to go see. And it's like, he goes, well, what, what do you want me to do? Well, this is the paper we got. Is this sharing information? Did they even ask him for an ID or a driver's license? This is no story here, fellas. We've been saying this all along about everything out there. Well, maybe since, uh, I think her name's Emily Langley, which I found from my buddies up there that live in Sandpoint. She's a powerful woman. Maybe somebody will start doing something about this. Brad Thurman needs to be called on the carpet. About his inaction and his actions. We told you about the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Where he threatened me in his office with his, uh, you better tone it down, Mr. Johnson, out there in public. I hadn't even said a word to him yet. And we met with him about his officers and to discuss it. And he said, no, we're not going to discuss that. Are you kidding me? He's a bully. And if, if that's how he acts and directs his traffic beneath him. And I'll say again, Officer Handy. Asking this seventy-four-year-old woman how to do an investigation, if they can look it up on Google to find out who these people are. And this has been going on in our community now eighteen months. Something has to be done right here, folks, whether Mr. Thurman likes it or not. The prosecuting attorney, even in Kelso or Longview, needs to look at this. Risk management. When I talked to me and Joanna, just spoke with her probably, I don't know, four or five months ago now, three or four months ago. After Jeremy Austin's gone, all right, I don't even know what it is. She said, I'll check with Brad Thurman. I'll get back to you. Have we heard anything? No. Where, what about accountability and responsibility? We just heard that earlier in a conversation. She told me today, she goes, Robert, I don't want to talk because she can't, she can't take it anymore. What kind of shit is this? What is wrong with you people? Everything we've said is the truth out there. No more skirting around. You guys are part of the program that can settle these problems. Your risk managers, where are they? Enough's enough, man. They cut me off on the freeway. What the hell do we do with this? And we're not moving. And I'll, I'll, I'll tell you, folks, the lady that was in here a week or so ago that spoke up about law enforcement. Great. They're not all perfect. They're not all good. Read the papers.
Anybody else? Seen any hands? Nothing? Okay, we will adjourn. Thank you.